Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February 20th meeting of the Marietta City Council Called to Order. Madam City Clerk, can you please take roll call to determine a quorum, please?
Councilmember DeForest.
Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Present. Thank you so much.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember DeForest.
Right. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments with regards to closed session items only?
Seeing none. And if I may, Madam Mayor, the City Council will meet in closed session on, as listed on the agenda, CS1 Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in two cases. The City Council will also conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property at the intersection of Calmia and Jefferson, APNs 906080041, 906080042, 906080033, with both communities, Fidelis Advisors, and Urban Pacific and Shopoff. The city's real property negotiators, city manager, assistant city managers, development services director, and city attorney will seek direction from the council regarding price and terms for this property. And the City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in two cases.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we are going to recess to closed session, and we will reconvene at 5:00 PM for the workshop. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February 20th workshop of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Would the City Clerk call roll for a determination of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavell.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. Our developmental impact fee nexus study and fee update workshop. Staff, you are ready to begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I would like to take just a minute and introduce the team that's here before you to present this workshop on development impact fees. With me this evening are Javier Carcamo, our Finance Director, Paige Hartman, Management Analyst in Finance, and then Carlos Villarreal from Willdan and James Edison from Willdan. Willdan is our consultant on this. I'll turn it over to Javier to start this evening's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Holler. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, and Members of the Public, thank you for your time this afternoon. So today's workshop relates to the development impact fees nexus study and fee update for the city of Marietta. In order for cities and counties to mitigate the impact on public improvements and facilities due to new development, cities and counties establishes a development impact fee program primarily for that very specific objective. The city's development impact fee program was initially established back in 1998. The authority under cities and counties can establish a DIF program is through the Mitigation Fee Act, also known as Assembly Bill 1600, which allows for the collection of fees from developers and apply the financial resources to public improvements projects that are needed to serve the new development projects. Pursuant to the Mitigation Fee Act, the nexus study is required to be updated at least every six, every eight years. The last time the city's study was adopted and updated was back in 2016. As staff today in front of you and our consultants share more information with you about the nexus studies and the proposed fees, I just wanted to share with you that the 2016 study that was adopted, it did not include an escalator. And so considering the, during the last six years, the costs have gone up since then for the constructions of facilities, therefore, our, you know, development impact fee has remained constant since then. So the primary goal of today's workshop is for staff to deliver the nexus study and provide a updated fee calculation, provide the opportunity for the development community to share any comments or concerns, and also for staff to receive city council directions prior to bringing the study back to you and the feedback to you for adoption next month on March 19th. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Paige Hartman Salazar, which is our Management Analyst with the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Javier. Wanted to start off touching briefly on our project timeline. As Javier mentioned, the development impact fee nexus study is a deep dive into our facility needs. Each city department was a part of this process, as well as contributed an extensive amount of research and time to their input on what was needed for the city. This originally started with an RFP in February of 2023, and an agreement was awarded to Willdan in May of 2023. We had a kickoff meeting in June shortly after with all of our senior management group and our appointed department project managers. Each department did a thorough review of each of their facility needs and created a planned project list based on priority that included in the study. The draft nexus study was then published on February 17th. Today is our workshop, and then we plan to bring the study and fee update to, for adoption on March 19th. As Javier mentioned briefly, kind of talked about certain reasons for why we're currently doing the study now. Most importantly is our Assembly Bill 602, as well as the fact of we have a ton of inflation costs recently. The CCI, which is the California Construction Cost Index, has determined that we've had a roughly increase of 48% from the 2016 study that, as Javier mentioned, was the last time we completed our study. It's important, mostly because of the inflation costs as well of our planned projects, that we are fiscally responsible to make sure we're collecting enough of these fees to support all of our CIP projects that are funded by our DIF. As the city continues to grow, the demands for the new infrastructure and facilities increases, and these planned projects create a need for the reevaluation of our fees. This is a current list that is enlisted in our nexus study. Most of these are new projects. Some of these are ones that we've discussed in the 2016 study that may not have made it to the project list at the time of implementation, as they were still in the planning stages or research phases. We have some big important projects coming up that you guys are all well aware of and how important it is for our safety and training facility that we've discussed, as well as the different departments, listed other things. Most importantly, for our finance, or for our fire department, we have our regional training center, which will be split with the police department. We have the police station expansion, as well as the community services library expansion, mobile library, and book lockers. I am now going to turn over for a more in-depth discussion to Willdan to explain what we needed to go over the study and how they conducted it.
Great. Thank you. I'm Carlos Villarreal with Willdan, and I worked on the study. And alongside me is James Edison, our Managing Principal. I'm going to review a little bit of Impact Fee 101 so that we're all on the same page. I will then go over some recent changes, as Paige alluded to, with AB 602 that we need to incorporate into our study. We'll then go through some of the methodologies used to calculate the fee so you have an understanding of how, you know, the nuts and bolts of how things work. And then we'll compare the fee schedule to the maximum justified fee schedule, compare the fee schedule to some of your neighbors, and then finally, we'll go over some implementation options that you have at your disposal when considering updating the fees. All right, so a little bit of Impact Fee 101 so that we're all on the same page. Impact fees are a one-time charge typically imposed at the building permit stage to all the projects within a defined geographic area. In this case, the, all the fees are charged citywide, so you would pay the same fee regardless of where you are in the city. And the key is that our study needs to demonstrate that the fees will fund facilities that are needed to serve new development. So the fees do not fund any ongoing costs like ongoing salaries, operations, and maintenance, or rehab. It has to be new or expanded capacity at your facilities to serve the increased demands from new development. In California, it's the Mitigation Fee Act that lays out how a local jurisdiction would calculate and implement the impact fees. There are several key findings required by this piece of legislation. First, the analysis needs to demonstrate that new development creates the need for facilities, that new development will benefit from the use of the fee revenue, and that the fees are roughly proportional to each unit of share of facility cost. We also need to document the purpose of the fee and how the city intends to use the fee revenue. Recently, AB 602 was passed at the state level, and there were several changes that had to do with how impact fees are implemented in the state. Our updated study makes all of these technical changes, but I'll just run through them here so you're aware of what's involved. The first changes are that, or requirements are some housekeeping items in terms of transparency. The city needs to make sure that your current impact fee documentation, nexus studies, fee schedules, and annual reporting is all available online. There has been a change to the adoption process, so the nexus study itself needs to be adopted with 30 days' notice. And then in terms of technical changes, the biggest one is that residential fees need to be calculated per square foot as opposed per, as opposed to per dwelling unit as your current fee schedule was currently calculated. Large jurisdictions, and that's defined as a city in a county with more than 250,000 people, need to adopt a CIP as part of the study, and that the nexus study needs to identify the level of service. If the fees are increasing, we need to review the assumptions from the prior study and evaluate the amount of fees collected under the original fee. So here's our basic methodology for calculating impact fees. We start by estimating demand for facilities. We think about demand in terms of people, so people that live and work in your city. We then can identify facility standards, and I'll discuss facility standards in a little bit more depth in a subsequent slide, but the general idea is that a facility standard is a measure of demand for facilities, the common example being park acres per 1,000 residents. Using those standards and any other facility planning that the city has done, we can then estimate the city's needs in terms of new facilities and the cost of those facilities, and then we can allocate a share of those to accommodate growth. So there are some cases, think about a fire station, that's going to serve people that live here now and people in the future. It would be unfair to make new development to pay for all of it, so we can identify a share, a proportional share, that is associated with new development, and that share would get funded by the fees in the case of that fire station. Some funding to fund that fire station would need to come from other funding sources essentially to pay existing development share of that facility. And then we finally calculate the fee schedule by allocating the cost per unit of new development. In this case, all the fees, or all of the units of new development are going to be per square foot, both for residential and non-residential land uses. In this update, these are the impact fee categories that we're looking at: law enforcement, fire protection, streets, minor bridges and culverts, traffic signals, storm drains, also general facilities, park facilities, community centers, and public libraries. As I mentioned, the first step in the impact fee study is to identify demand for facilities. This slide summarizes the growth projections used in the study. The 2035 growth projections come from your general plan. So as you can see, there's a significant amount of growth, both in terms of residents and the dwelling units that would house those residents, but also in terms of employment between now and 2035. With this large increase of service population, you're going to have to provide service to these folks, and consequently, you would need facilities to house those services. And that's the nexus, or the relationship between new development and the fees. I mentioned facility standards in a prior slide. We use three different approaches depending on the facility category, and this next slide sort of summarizes the approach. The first approach, we call the existing inventory approach. This is where we use the existing level of service to drive the fee calculation. We can quantify the existing replacement costs of any particular type of facilities, compare that to existing demand, and the resulting cost per unit of demand would be what we would base the impact fee on. So for example, we could take a look at parks. We would know that there's certain amount of cost per acre to provide your certain level of service, and the impact fee again would be based on maintaining that same level of service in terms of acres per 1,000 residents, so that new residents can enjoy the same level of service that your current residents enjoy. Under the planned facilities approach, here's where we can identify a particular facility to serve new development. In that case, we would take the cost of that facility and divide it by the increase in demand, and the resulting cost per unit of demand or cost per person would drive the fee calculation. And the third approach was what we call the system plan. Here's where the impact fees contemplate an increase in your level of service. An example here might be a new fire station that serves everyone. What we would do is we would take a look at the total system of facilities at the planning horizon and the resulting cost per unit of demand at that future defined planning horizon. We can charge new development at that higher level of service, but existing development would also need to pay their fair share of the increase in level of service. The math there is pretty simple. We take the value of your existing facilities plus the, the cost of the planned facilities, then divide that by the demand at the planning horizon to get the cost per unit of demand to drive the fee calculation. For the updated fee program, these are the methodologies used for the various facility categories. We decided, based on consultations with city staff, which approach was appropriate for each facility category. I'm not going to read them through, through all of them here, but you can see, we picked different approaches depending on the facility needs for each facility category. So if your council were to adopt the fees at the maximum justified level, how much fee revenue would that be? Through 2035, the projection here would be the impact fees could generate as much as $602 million. Of course, for some of these facility categories where existing development would also benefit, we cannot allocate the entirety of those costs to the impact fees, so the city would have to come up with about $104.5 million to fund existing development share of these facilities. All told, across both existing and new development, the total project costs identified in the study are about $706.5 million. So how does the maximum justified fee schedule compare to your prior fee schedule? These two tables here, and I apologize, there's a lot going on on this slide, summarize the fee, the current fees and the maximum justified fees. Because there's this change due to AB 602 in terms of the fees being calculated per square foot going forward, and your current program is calculated per dwelling unit, we had to make some assumptions to sort of calculate an equivalent fee per square foot. So that's that second grouping of single family and multifamily fees in the table. Just for comparison purposes, your current equivalent fee per square foot for, for single family would be about $5.42 per square foot. The maximum justified fees supported by the study would be $9.19 per square foot. So it would be a significant increase for that fee category. But to illustrate a little bit better what the, what the current and maximum justified fees would be, and also what some of your neighbors are charging, we conducted a fee comparison, and the results of that are shown on the slide here. This first slide would be for a single family, one single family unit at 2,555 square feet, which is the average square footage of a recently built, single family units in your city. You can see there, all the way to the left in the orange, that would be your current fee schedule. That fee would be $13,853. The maximum justified fee supported by the draft fee study would be $19,444. You can see that would fall within the range of what your neighbors are charging. And so before folks are kind of wondering what's going on here, some of your neighbors have different fee zones, so depending on where you build in the city, you might pay a different fee. So for those jurisdictions, we show a low and a high to sort of illustrate the range of fees that you might pay in that jurisdiction. So yeah, this is the, the comparison for the single family dwelling unit. The next slide here shows that same comparison but for one multifamily residential unit at 1,198 square feet. Again, that was the average multifamily unit built in the city recently. Again, you can see both your current and the maximum justified draft fees are within the range of what some of the neighbors charge. Of course, some of your neighbors charge less, some charge more. This next slide does the same comparison but for 1,000 square feet of commercial. Again, you are falling within the range of what the neighbors charge. Not much more to say here, except Moreno Valley, they have two different fee schedules depending on the type of commercial, so rather than differentiate between geographic zones, the differentiation here is between the different types of commercial that they charge. And finally, we have one more comparison here showing what the current and maximum justified fees would be for 1,000 square feet of industrial land uses. Again, both would fall within the range of what the other comparison cities charge. Oh, one more comparison, sorry about that. And this one would be for office. Again, the, the current and maximum justified fees would fall within the range of the comparison jurisdictions. All right, so one policy lever that you have at your disposal when thinking about implementing fees is phasing in the fees over a certain number of years. We know you haven't updated your fees in some time, and when there is a large increase, it can create a bit of a shock to the development community. So city staff is considering, or would like to potentially recommend phasing in the fees for certain land uses. This slide here shows what the current impact fees would be for several prototype projects. So you can see the square footage of those projects in the second column there, corresponding with the different land uses. The third column shows what the fees would be under your current fee schedule, and then the, the next three columns show for industrial and for office, which is the two land uses that staff is recommending a phase in for, what the annual increase compared to your current fees might be if you do a four-year, sorry, five-year, four-year, or three-year phase in up to the maximum justified fee schedule all the way over on the right there. Another policy option that you have at your disposal when implementing the fees are different types of incentive, incentive programs. What's shown here on the slide are a couple of examples that staff had, has been considering in terms of, you know, different incentives that you could offer to development as you implement the fee program. So under the first option, you could, for example, defer the payment of the impact fee until the certificate of occupancy. You could discount the fee schedule for a given land use, or, and these are focused on non-residential land uses. You could discount the fee schedule based on the number of jobs generated by a particular project, so the more jobs, job creating uses that, that are created, they would pay proportionally lower fees. And you could also potentially reduce the, the DIF, the impact fees, by a certain amount for every created job. Under option two, the impact fee could be reduced during the permitting process, so they would pay a lower fee upfront. You could discount the fees based on the, the estimated range of number of jobs, and there would be a certain amount of credit given for the range of jobs. Again, these are just examples. You could identify the criteria that resonate with you and weave that into the, any implementation program. And again, I'm not, not going to read through all of this, but just, just suffice it to say there are other jurisdictions that have taken this approach and have created incentive programs for particular land uses. We worked with Stanislaus County up in the Central Valley. They were really focused on creating industrial jobs, so they crafted criteria and an industrial program to incentivize those types of jobs as they implemented their impact fees. And that's it for our presentation. Would be happy to answer any questions you all might have for us.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm waiting to see, okay, Councilmember Holliday.
Of course I do. Couple questions. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I thought I read somewhere, either a staff report or somewhere in the documents, that Temecula hasn't done a DIF fee study since 2003.
I don't know off the top of my head when the last time they, they did their study was.
So that is correct. I believe that the City of Temecula have an escalator embedded within their fees that have been adopted.
So if we, if we include an escalator, we don't have to do the study every eight years?
No. You still, we, you see, an agency still have to be required to do a study every eight years and, and update the nexus study as well as update their fees.
And they're still using the per-unit fee? And under the law that just got passed, they have to switch to the square footage as well?
That is correct, unless the, also the, the, AB 602 would allow an agency to make a section or provide a finding as to what the, the election of fees might be more feasible for their specific city. But yes, that is correct. They would, will have to update their fees based on the square footage.
And under AB 602, how much time does the city have to do that?
To be honest, it isn't, it isn't clear under AB 602. AB 602 just says that a jurisdiction has to update their impact fee study every eight years, but doesn't lay out for existing programs that are not being updated when they have to switch to a different metric. So that's, that's a question that's still up in the air, to be honest.
Okay. Councilmember Holliday, I can provide a little additional context. Without naming the jurisdiction, there is a, another jurisdiction in Southwest Riverside County that made a finding to continue to use per-unit cost instead of, instead of per square foot. We reviewed that finding. We reviewed it with our consultant Willdan. We reviewed it with our city attorney. We all reached the same conclusion that the finding would likely be, how do I want to say this, subject to challenge. And so we elected not to pursue a per-unit cost, but to use the methodology that is commonly in use pursuant to 602.
Okay. Thank you. And then I noticed Menifee fees were significantly higher than pretty much everyone else. Has their study been done more recently?
Yeah, well, so I think they just did it last, last year.
Yeah, which would explain with the inflation that we've had over the last several years why their fees would be considerably higher than everyone else. Do you know if they have an escalator in theirs? And are you guys proposing an escalator in this proposal? I don't want to, you take it.
No, 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 I'll take it. I can get the mic button to work. We do not currently have an escalator in, in the item that's before you. Having said that, however, as a council, it, it might be a little bit easier when we have to have updates to our development impact fee if you had escalators that increase the fee a little bit each year as we go along, so that you're not facing a large increase, as unfortunately we are here with some of the categories. So that, that's an option that I think is worth consideration. We can certainly bring that back to you and include an escalator in the fees.
Talking about the, the discount for job creation, how would that work if a business comes in and says they're going to create 100 jobs, but then they don't? If they get the fee credit upfront, and they don't create the jobs, and then he ceases to do business, they've basically got to create their development at a discount, and we got nothing for it. How would you propose to prevent that?
We've, we've talked a little bit about the mechanics because of just that concern. If we charge them a lower fee, and indeed, they don't bring jobs forward, how do we handle that? So although the fee ordinance, development impact fee ordinance today, even though we use the term fee credits, it really is more of a reimbursement, we'd have to amend the ordinance. What we talked about is maybe there would be a delay in receiving the, the credit amount, so they might pay the entirety of the fee or, or, we're still working on that part, and then receive a credit after a certain period of time, whether that time is six months or, or just what. We, we don't have those details worked out, but we wanted to make sure we put that in front of your council because we think that program has merit.
Yeah, I agree. I like the idea of incentive fee reductions, kind of like we do with other developments that come into town, but I certainly don't want to be handing out credits upfront and then have a bunch of businesses decide they're not going to work out, and then turn around and sell it to somebody else, and they've already gotten the discount to create the structure, and yet produce nothing for it. So I'm glad you're thinking along those lines. So I'm glad you're thinking along those lines. And then in the report, sorry to get into weeds here for a second, but on page 28 and 29 of your study, it references existing conditions in 2013. Is that a typo or is that intentional?
That's intentional. So the level of service was first identified in 2013, and the development since then has been paying into the fee program. Projects that have been completed have been removed from the study, and the existing fund balance, which represents development between 2013 and today, their share of those facility costs is subtracted from the total cost that's allocated to new development. So we use that 2013 as the baseline to identify whether or not these segments were operating at an acceptable level of service at that time. And because we're updating, again, we're taking the fee revenue that's been generated since then, subtracting it from the cost, and then allocating the remaining costs to development between now and 2035.
And so 2013 for the roadways and those segments that you have identified there, that was from the previous study?
Correct.
Even though the study, the fee was implemented in 2016, the study was done in 2013?
That was when the traffic bottling was completed.
Okay. And the rest of the stuff is 2023 is what our baseline is?
Correct.
Because we have that information from that. I think there was one other page, I think it was page 43, that was slightly, yeah, storm drain, same situation there? They had the study from 2013 on the storm drains?
Correct, yeah. The storm drain study identified those costs at that time. We took the cost, well, first, we removed any projects that had been completed. For the remaining projects, we took the cost from 2013 and adjusted those for inflation into $2023, and then allocated those costs, a share of those costs to new development.
Okay, appreciate it. It's all my questions. I'll have comments later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Pro Tim Warren.
Thank you. Thank you. That was really a very good presentation. I liked the 101 part, that was well done. Hey, a couple of questions for you. Not as many extra questions as Ronald has, so, you know, just to let you know. The neighboring cities, the charts that you showed for that, other than Menefee, those cities have not adjusted their fee schedule based on the per-square-foot, is that correct?
No, not yet, no. Lake Elsinore hasn't updated their fees in a long time. I think the story is because a lot of these cities haven't gone and done their update yet, they just haven't gotten around to it yet.
So even though you see on that chart our new proposed fees would be, those numbers on their ends could go up higher, and we would be well below those fees once they implement the new standard, correct?
They could, they could.
Okay, all right. The next thing is fees are not, most of the fees are not upfront costs, correct? They're not paid upfront before development happens?
They're, well, they're typically paid at the building permit stage.
Okay, so, but that can also be financed, correct? And those fees are most, and most are always, to my understanding, they are passed through to the end user, correct? So the developer is only out the fees at the time of permitting, and then it gets, as they sell the property or the development, it goes to the end user, is that correct?
So when you see a larger development, now, this wouldn't be true for smaller developments, for a larger development, a lot of times, they'll form a CFD as a financing mechanism, and they'll roll, if I can talk, roll development impact fees into that now that that policy exists. And so those fees would show up on property tax bills for owners as part of the Melrose.
Okay, that's what I meant. Thank you for clarifying that.
It's a long answer to say yes.
Okay, thank you, perfect. Last thing, if an application at this time meets a status deemed complete, the application would not be subjected to the new fees, it would be grandfathered in as the current fees that they came in their application for. Would that be correct?
That is correct. That is our proposal at this point in time. That becomes a policy decision, but that's our recommendation.
That is, that's your recommendation.
And if I could just elaborate a little bit, I'll break my own rule because I've already answered your question, but I think it's important, we don't think it would be fair, that is, staff doesn't think it would be fair, to hit a developer who's at the 11th hour, ready to pull permits with a fee increase. So we think an appropriate break is when they've made an application submittal, and that's deemed complete, they are then grandfathered in, and they'll pay the existing fees. There's no legal issue associated with that. We think that's just an equitable thing to do.
Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pro Tim Warren. Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of clarifications. In 2016, were the costs proportional in increase to what we're looking at today?
From what I recall, I have some knowledge of what happened in 2016, yes, there were substantial increases at that time as well, so it's not that different. I would say that the increases for the industrial and office, maybe, this is from my memory now, maybe a little bit more than what they were back then, but yes, fees increased in some cases dramatically in 16.
All right, thank you for that. And then I just noticed that some cities had the high versus the low. Is that something that we have never used in our city, or is that something that would be utilized in our city? Maybe could you elaborate on what that high and low is?
Yeah, so to my knowledge, that hasn't been used in the city before. And that occurs when there are certain improvements that may benefit one part of the city more than they might benefit another. And occasionally, it's done with traffic fees. You know, I'm looking at Temecula, they have an uptown Temecula new streets fee, so that's only paid in that particular part of town. And that's when there's a distinct level of service that would be different in one part of town, where you would require development to pay at that higher rate compared to everywhere else. When we were updating the study, and the approach from the prior study was that everyone in your city is going to receive a similar level of service across all of these facility types. So it didn't make sense in this case to pursue a fee zone that would have a much higher level of service than somewhere else. So that's why it's one fee citywide. Certainly, in an update, that's certainly something that you could consider, but we didn't think it was appropriate during this update.
We just have some very rural areas in our city that really aren't going to benefit from storm drains and things like that. They don't even have water, you know? So we have a very diverse city, so just putting everything into a nutshell, I'm just a little bit, I'd like some more information on that as well.
Okay.
Because we do, looking through your report, which is very thorough, and thank you very much for that, it just seems like there may be some disproportionate to some of our outlying areas. And one, my last question to you is, what is our, what is the difference? I see the single-family and multifamily. It looks to me that the same-size multifamily is paying less than a single-family resident. Is that correct, or am I reading?
On a per-square-foot basis, a similar size, or the same-size multifamily would pay a higher amount per square foot. That is because multifamily has more people per square feet.
Okay, so I read that wrong. So I thank you, thank you for that clarification. All right, that's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeForest. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding the discussion item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Mr. Kassen Klein.
Hello. Repeat myself. This one?
Thank you. As a longtime resident, one who has enjoyed the quality of life that our services provide, I have a couple of questions for benefit of those who may be opposed or object to any fee increases. That 48% number was very alarming. Would be curious to know, you know, how many CIP projects have we completed at that, what I'm going to call a 48% deficit to today? What has that cost? Where has that money come from? What has subsidized that? If we're at a 48% shortfall in DIF, we've subsidized that from somewhere. Where has that come from? And it would really be interesting to see what has that number been? Because it's my understanding, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, when I sit down, it's my understanding that any shortfall in DIF has been subsidized by our general fund or our 1% sales tax. And so from my perspective, again, as a longtime resident, that's your constituents that have subsidized developers that have come into town. So again, you know, I'm curious, for any of those of you that are opposed to fee increases, I'm asking the question, would you rather have your constituents subsidize new development, or are you going to support raising fees to where they should be that your staff and the experts are telling you? So I look forward to answers to those questions. Thank you.
Concludes public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmembers, let's bring it back to the dais for a discussion. Councilman Holliday.
So the public speaker's question, the 48% was a cumulative number. Obviously, in 2017, we weren't subsidizing it by 48%. That's what it would be today if we didn't change the fee, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Holliday.
And then, and then he is correct in the sense that if we didn't change the fee today at all, well, we're not changing it today, but in our future council meeting, when we vote on this, if we voted not to change the fee, the general fund is subsidizing those, that shortage, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holliday. Councilwoman DeForest.
I just want to thank you for, I want to thank you for in-depth presentation and clarity in your report. So thank you very much for that. And the 48% number is very alarming, as Kassen brought up, and putting that at the backs of our taxpayers is not where we want to put that. Developers are coming in and doing well in our community, and we need them to make sure that they pay their fair share for development coming here. So thank you for that. Thank you again for your report. I appreciate you being here tonight and answering our questions.
No, no, it's just a workshop. Thank you, Councilwoman DeForest. Okay, let's move on to, I need a motion and I need a second.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. I apologize. I may have asked you to do that. This is a workshop item, so there is no action needed.
No, there is no action. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay. Oh, sorry. Yes, no action, because it's on here, yes. Councilman.
Direction that.
Can you?
Sorry, I was just going to clarify, this is coming back for a decision on March 19th. Was that stated? Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. Yes, sir.
So if I might, Mayor Stone, just for clarification, so my understanding is that we'll look at an analysis of a differential fee in a couple of the areas of the city that are not developed with infrastructure. If that's the direction, we'll look at that, and then we'll further explore and add to the incentive program when we return. And I think that was, that was the only, those were the only two items, I believe?
And the escalator.
The escalator.
Oh, the escalator.
Escalator.
Okay, we'll do that too. Sorry.
Mr. Holler, I want to get a clarification real fast, please. Mayor Pro Tim Warren had made a comment that the developer can choose to put those fees in a CFD or back into the cell of the home, so the resident actually would be paying for these fees, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman DeForest, did you have another question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate that incentivizing for job development, I think, is definitely something that I think that I heard all of us reiterate up here, and we'd really like to see that go forward, if I may speak.
And could I ask for clarification? We also have an option for phasing. Would you like us to bring back both?
Yes, please, yes. Any other discussion items or questions? Yes, Councilwoman DeForest. Oh, no, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. All right. Thank you all very much for your in-depth presentations, very much appreciated.
Mayor Stone, could I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Javier and Paige, on the staff side, put together everything that you see here, obviously with the help of our capable consultant Will Dan. They jumped into the deep end of the pool with this one, and I just want to acknowledge their efforts. I think they've done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you all again, very, very much. With that, the workshop will end, and we will call for recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to February 20th meeting of the Maryland City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on five items. The first two were anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. In both items, the council was updated, no reportable action. The council just then met in closed session to confer with its real property negotiator regarding three properties pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. The last two items were also anticipated litigation, where there was significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2. And again, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Would the city clerk please call, roll for determination of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, and I'd like to state that Councilmember DeForest was also present during the entire closed session.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Ron Holliday, and remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Rick with Calvary Chapel French Valley.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. Thank you for all those that have gathered here today and the business before us. We ask that you give us your wisdom into our hearts and minds as we deal with the city's business and have it all be to your glory. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Holliday. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Great. Let's call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I have a second, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Warren and a second from Councilmember Lavelle. Please vote. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to city manager administration updates, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have two presentations. The first is going to be given by Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane, and she's going to talk about the new lineup for the amphitheater, and that will be followed by Christina Davies. She's our acting PIO, and she'll be giving a community update. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So back in fall of 2023, the city council approved a license agreement with Newman Hospitality Group to bring a series of major special events to our Town Square Park Amphitheater. This slide previews the lineup, and I'm going to go through each one in a little bit more detail, but we're really excited to have four major special events that will be happening at the amphitheater starting in April. These are all in addition to the regular lineup of events that our Community Services Department puts on, including the concerts in the park, the movies in the park, and so forth. So this is above and beyond those events. Tickets are on sale now for the Jazz and Blues Festival, which is scheduled for April 20th and 21st. They have had a great response to the lineup so far with some really well-known bands, and they're very pleased with the, Newman Hospitality is really pleased with the number of tickets that they have sold so far. They've seen a lot of sales coming They've seen a lot of sales coming from San Diego and Los Angeles and are going to be starting radio advertisements in those markets next week, actually. And so, expect to see even more. And we've, along those lines, we have connected Newman Hospitality Group with Explore Marietta and Marietta Hot Springs in order to encourage some synergistic partnerships to welcome all of these out-of-town guests to also then stay in our hotels and easily transport them to our amphitheater. So we're really excited about that. For the June Old Town Music Festival, the lineup is going to be announced very soon. It's two days of country music. This is going to be their fourth annual Old Town Music Festival. And the tickets are scheduled to go on sale in March. Then, they are planning an end-of-summer, summer-sunset-themed concert in August, with no information yet on what that's about, but it does sound fun. And Rocktoberfest is coming our way on October 19th. It's going to feature a full day of rock music, a beer garden, German food, and games and more. I'm really excited about that. I'm kind of a big fan of Oktoberfest, so. So as I have said, the tickets are on sale now for the April event. You can buy a ticket as a one-day or two-day tickets. They start at $68 for the two days and $39 for one day. Those are for the general admission lawn seats, and you can bring your own chairs. But they also have some special fun seating arrangements. I don't know if you can tell, looking at the bottom one, they actually kind of tested out how this would fit Hollywood Bowl-style tables and chairs that will have servers, actually. And then down on the front area closest to the stage, they have additional seating. So those tickets are more expensive to be up, up close. There's a lot of work underway happening with Newman Hospitality Group and our Community Services Department staff, as well as all the other departments, police, fire, building. Everybody kind of gets to play a hand in this. We want this to go as smoothly as possible, to be safe, to be fun, and to take good care of our amenity. This is the website where you can go and buy your tickets. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Crane.
I'm coming up to the podium, because this is where I've been doing my other updates. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, and the rest of Marietta. I'm just going to give you a little bit of an update on what is going on in Marietta. So, let's talk about a couple of events. Every month, we do Coffee with the City, and I just really love to remind people about this event, because this is your chance to come out and talk to city leaders, ask your questions. And this is going to be on February 27th. I put the location on there. This is at the MIC. An upcoming event, so we have a couple master plan workshops that are going to be happening. And this is going to be in March. So we have March 19th, and that's for our Parks and Rec Master Plan. And then our Trails Master Plan is happening March 28th. And for some news, we have our Adopt a Street program going on. So I just want to remind residents that if you want to help maintain Marietta's streets, of course, we take pride in our city. And so, I put the link up there if anyone is interested in joining the Adopt a Street program. And also, I can't leave without talking about jobs, because we do have some job postings that are up. We have for management analyst job, police officer, police services technician, and senior planner. Of course, I will put those links right there as well. So for anyone interested in applying for a job with Marietta or to stay connected, please go to mariettaca.gov/jobs, if you're interested in a job, and then forward slash connect. And again, I always repeat this, but that is just a webpage that has all the ways that you can stay connected with Marietta, because we are connected by community.
Thank you, Ms. Davies. And by the way, by the way, I'll adopt a street as well, so.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Hit me up tomorrow.
I will.
Thank you. All right, moving on to governing body commission, committee boards. What was that, Councilman Lavelle? What was that over there? That's your district, sir. I challenge you to adopt that street. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, everybody. On to governing body announcements, committee, committee boards and reports. And we will start with Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm going to defer to our next meeting.
Great. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I sat in on a Zoom call for the alternate on the RCHCA for the Habitat Conservancy. My goodness. Conservation Agency, there you go. Nothing to report out of the meeting. Hopefully, it'll be in person next time.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle. Councilman Holliday.
I had, none of the boards that I am on had meetings from the last council meeting, so I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 14th, on Valentine's Day, I can't think of a better place to be than at a RCTC meeting in the morning. Well, we did, there was a lot of presentations made that day, but one thing that was discussed and was approved unanimously. Phase two plans and specifications for the I-15 New Franklin Street on off-ramp in Lake Elsinore has been approved. RCTC is going to be the lead agency for this project. This is a 20, this has been going on for 20 years. So this is phase two. Phase one was a railroad canyon off-ramp improvement. And so, they're going to start on the engineering and the plans and specifications, so that is the off-ramp would be before railroad canyon going towards San Diego or after railroad canyon going towards the 91. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Assistant City Manager Kristin Crane and I went to a joint Riverside County-San Bernardino-Cow Cities session. And it was kind of nice to see both counties collaborating. And basically, it's the same issues. I have really nothing to report other than our economy, affordable housing, homelessness, jobs, and transportation. So that concludes my report. We're moving on to public comments. Public comments, or any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, there's no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies or any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Request for more time must be made to the City Clerk, with timing limited to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Shane Delcy.
Thanks for having me here again. Just to keep, keep one of the biggest evils in our city up on our minds is that we still have Planned Parenthood here in Marietta. And babies are being murdered every day here in our city. Been a part of Marietta for 18 years now. Love this city. Appreciate all that you guys do to Mayor and Marietta City Council. I'm a child of God, a local pastor and resident of Marietta. God loves life and hates murder. It's, it's been said in Genesis 1:26 in God's Word that He created man in His image, and we each bear the image of God. We do. And God has, has His handprint on our lives. Genesis 1:27 says, God's word says, "So God created man in His own image. In the image of God, He created him, male and female. He created them." And God has also said in Psalm 139, 13 and 14, "That He formed our inward parts, that He knitted us together in our mother's wombs. We are fearfully and wonderfully made; my soul knows it very well." And then God also says in Exodus 20, verse 13, as part of the Ten Commandments, "Thou shalt not murder." And since last August, when, when this organization Planned Parenthood was allowed in our city, murder has been taking place every day since then here in Marietta. And it grieves my heart. It should grieve yours as well. It's a huge injustice going on. Last time I was here, I asked you an important question that we all need to consider. What is it? What is in the womb? If it truly is a human life from conception, which not only the word of God proclaims it is, but also, it's a scientific fact, that conception, it's a, it's a human being in the womb. That, we have to answer that question. If it is a human being, then we're allowing murder to happen in the womb. So is there a difference between a human being inside the womb and outside the womb? No. Other than size, level of development, environment, and degree of dependency, this is a child and it needs protecting. We need to be protecting babies within the womb. I want to bring, I'm going to continue to bring this up to you, that God in Romans 13:1 has given you these positions where you're at for this such a time as this, that you have no authority except for what God has given you, 1 Peter 2:13. God has given governors and, and city council members and other authorities sent by Him to punish those who do evil. And the greatest evil going on is the murder of the unborn. And so, want to continue to bring this to your attention. What can we do as a city to rid ourselves and our city of Planned Parenthood, which we've allowed in last August? Thank you. Appreciate you guys a lot.
Mr. Delcy, can you contact me tomorrow?
You can contact me tomorrow. I would love that.
Will you please give the City Clerk your contact information?
You guys have it?
Thank you.
Desiree Ferraro.
Former Mayor DeForest, would you mind coming down? We were so busy last month that we didn't have a chance to come by and thank you for your services, Mayor. Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez so much appreciates how you welcomed us into this community when the 71st Assembly District was first brought into, what was it? Yeah. So, on behalf of Kate Sanchez, your Assembly Member, we want to thank you so much. You did so much to let us know what was going on in Marietta, tours and meetings. And we just thank you so much, and the Assembly Member is so appreciative.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Amy Edworth.
Good evening, esteemed council members of Marietta. Guess what? Tonight, I'm not here to talk about trains. I know, shocking, right? But fear not, because I've brought along a topic that's equally challenging to say three times fast. The Teenology Tapestry Fest. Yes, you heard that right. No, it's not a new train line, but rather a fantastic voyage through time and art, happening this April at the Marietta Public Library and with help from our National Charity League volunteers. But first, I'd like to offer a big shout-out of gratitude to the 3rd District County Supervisor's Office for tossing a golden ticket our way with the Community Improvement Development Grant. This isn't just pocket change. It's our all-access pass to a month-long festival that combines teenagers, genealogy, and weaving our stories together, quite literally into a giant community tapestry to be proudly displayed at our amazing Marietta Public Library. These events are meant to retell and recreate memories that our community members will talk about across the generations. So what's this fest all about? Imagine inspiring your teenagers to explore the depths of their family history, then watching as they get curious, ask questions, and even turn that history into art. It's like a family reunion, but cooler, because everyone's getting along and making art. We've got workshops lined up that'll teach teens and their families how to build and explore their family tree, upload family stories, access photos, and other digital archives, as well as an opportunity to share their stories in a documentary component of this special community project. We will be further connecting our community through participation at the firefighter's barbecue, and then inviting folks to help us assemble the tapestry and enjoy live-heart music as they share stories on the final evening before the big culminating event on April 27th. Now, I cordially extend an invitation to you, our beloved city council, to join the grand unveiling of our community tapestry on April 27th. It's one thing to hear me ramble on about it, but quite another to see it with your own eyes. Plus, you'll get to witness firsthand that I can indeed talk about something other than trains and that the people in our community share a passion for the cultural arts programs we offer. In wrapping up, and before anyone accuses me of hiding a train proposal in here somewhere, let me just say thank you. Thank you to the 3rd County, the 3rd District County Supervisor's Office. Thank you to our community, and thank you to you, our city council, for being such good sports, supporting these wild rides I keep taking you on. Here's to the Teenology Tapestry Fest, where we prove that the only thing more tangled than our family trees is trying to say "teenology tapestry" 10 times fast after two cups of coffee. See you on the 27th, and don't worry, I'll make sure the only tracks we'll be discussing are the ones our ancestors made. Thank you.
Mayor, I have Fay Wans. I'd also like to note that Mr. Alan Long has donated his time, so she would like six minutes, if that's appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Fay Wans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you're like me, but once I've decided who I'm going to vote for, all the votes that come in to the House, the advertisements, I throw in the trash. When I got Chuck Washington's ad along with a few others, I gave them a toss. Later in the day, a friend called, very upset. They said that there were a few statements, that's the one that sent through the mail, said that there were a few statements on that mailed ad that were misleading. So I got mine out of the trash. On the backside, in bright, big, bold red letters, Washington claimed Jonathan Ingram of raising taxes by $14 million. Then, under his statement, I circled it in letters so small you almost need a magnifying glass to see them. Washington cites Marietta Council Meeting on 7/17/2018 on Measure T as his source. Measure T was passed when Marietta residents voted on it. The measure was to fund our police and fire departments. I believe our great first responders, I can't get this open. Anyway, they took a cut in pay, so they wouldn't have to lay everybody off and we could maintain our same level of service. And that's why today, one of the reasons we are called one of the safest cities in the nation. Then, in the next section, Washington accused Mr. Ingram of increasing the amounts of business fees. That really surprised me, as Mr. Washington was on the Marietta Council and at one time served as mayor. He knows full well that no one person can raise business fees. That matter would have to go before the entire council, be voted on, and passed by a majority. The last statement Washington made, that Mr. Ingram was a liberal politician. Mr. Ingram was chairman of the Riverside County Republican Party, so I think he's mistaken. If you've been around for a while, you should remember Washington was appointed to the position of supervisor by a Democratic liberal governor. As I said it before, if you've been around very long, you know I don't, didn't like Mr. Ingram. But that certainly changed. Several years ago, my daughter hosted a car wash for a no-kill animal shelter. Mr. Ingram showed up and made a generous donation. Then he picked up a towel and started washing cars. His entire family is civic-minded. While he was washing cars, his wife was holding up signs on the corner alongside me. Mr. Ingram has smoked full hams and donated them to our firehouses. When we had a presentation for school kit, excuse me. When we had a presentation for school kids, excuse me, school kids at the Innovation Center who competed in Europe and won one of the top places, the city gave them a certificate. Mr. Ingram gave each one of them a check to go towards a travel fund, so they could compete again the following year. These are just a few examples of the countless times Mr. Ingram has stepped up to fill a need or donate to a worthy cause. When COVID hit and everything shut down, Mr. Ingram went into action. He took food, milk, toilet paper to the elderly, then he went to a distillery and asked if they could make distilled water for medical machines that require distilled water. He always answers his phones, has solutions to problems that have sat on the shelves for years, never voted to raise taxes, isn't conflicted in any way, helps anyone in need, and fights for right over wrong. He is educated and has experience in government policy, supports small business owner, veterans, area youth, the elderly, and all minorities. Mr. Ingram is a true public servant, and I believe we need him to be elected as Riverside County Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar approval of items 1 through 10. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There's no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Madam City Clerk, I understand that there is a staff request to pull item number 6 memorandum of understanding with the City of Wildomar for homeless services for discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, city staff would like to speak on that.
Thank you. Are there any other requests from City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? Councilman Holliday?
I need to abstain on item number 9, as I own property within 1,000 feet of Madison Avenue.
Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Saying none.
Great. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar excluding item number 6, which is pulled for discussion, and also Councilmember Holliday has recused himself from item number 9? I see a motion by Councilmember Lavell, second by Councilwoman DeForest. If we can move to vote?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We will move on to item 6 for discussion. Mr. Ambrose.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the chance to briefly discuss this important and innovative new partnership between the cities of Marietta and Wildomar regarding homeless services. For a quick background, to benefit those watching, Marietta was a co-founder of an entity called the Regional Homeless Alliance. The goal of the City of Marietta, and also of the Regional Homeless Alliance, has always been functional zero homelessness. That's defined as a bed available for any individual willing to work towards housing sustainability. Within the housing community, it is well-known that Marietta has made an unparalleled investment to ensure our community reaches and maintains functional zero homelessness. For example, this City Council funds two separate police department teams that support my staff in the field: the Community Policing Team, CPT for short, and the Community Behavioral Health Assessment Team. This investment into these teams of specially-trained officers is unmatched by any other jurisdiction. Excuse me while I actually put my eyes on and can see now. While we do not do a great job of publicizing it, we have verifiable evidence that our approach is working. Since 2017, homelessness in Riverside County has increased by 49%. In the same timeframe, homelessness within the five RHA communities has dropped by 1.1% and will modestly call that remaining flat. That I know of, the RHA is the only five-city contiguous region in California that has not increased in homelessness in this seven-year timeframe. Additionally, Marietta remains one of the few cities that has reached and maintained functional zero homelessness. Now, before we hurt ourselves by patting ourselves on the back for the success, understand that as a region, we had advantages of being relatively newer and with very little homeless infrastructure. That dynamic is changing, and it's impacting our region. I want to caution that in spite of our good work, it is likely that homelessness will continue to increase for the foreseeable future in our region, as more individuals migrate from the coastal communities to this community. And that's why tonight's action before you is so important. It continues to build the infrastructure that we need for success. Within the context of collaborating within the RHA, the City of Wildomar recently approached City of Marietta staff to discuss ways to replicate our homeless services program in Wildomar. Considering Wildomar's smaller population, as well as their smaller homeless population, it wouldn't make sense for their city to hire full-time staff specific to homelessness and to contract full-time for services such as homeless outreach and case management services. Therefore, we discussed utilizing existing staffing and contracts in Marietta and essentially erasing the border between the two cities. In summary, we have discussed a six-month pilot program that is before you tonight that will allow the City of Marietta staff, Marietta staff, to oversee the homeless services program in Wildomar in partnership with their existing code enforcement and sheriff's teams. Wildomar will purchase one and a half days of street outreach service per week from the City of Marietta, utilizing our existing agreement with CityNet. Wildomar will also enter into a separate agreement with Project Touch based on the agreement that Marietta has with Project Touch for emergency sheltering. Most important, Wildomar will provide full-cost recovery for these services, plus pay Marietta a 10% administrative fee. In short, the principles behind this memorandum of understanding include the fact that Marietta staff has the expertise and the existing infrastructure regarding street outreach, emergency sheltering, and case management. The same exact procedures we use in Marietta will be used in Wildomar. That means when street outreach finds a homeless individual, we can immediately, within minutes, if not one hour, have that person housed if they don't have issues that we need to take to different facilities. Another principle written into the MOU, Wildomar agrees to a good-faith effort to site a homeless shelter within their city. Project Touch has property in Wildomar already and is working with their city to permit the operation of transitional housing with an emergency sheltering component. That is huge for us. The last principle behind this MOU is that Wildomar's homeless often become Marietta's homeless and vice versa. I've been doing this for a long time, and I regularly see individuals going from Wildomar to here and back. If we can help Wildomar with street exits, we directly benefit. Regarding funding behind this MOU, as mentioned earlier, Marietta's proposal to Wildomar was for full-cost recovery, meaning our staff will be reimbursed for the fully-burdened hourly rate when we work in Wildomar. And all services will be fully reimbursed up to a maximum of $20,000 per month. With that said, staff has been successful in the past few years and has been awarded multiple regional grants for homeless services. These grants will be utilized to offset the cost for this partnership as they were intended to be. That leaves a discussion on staffing. At this time, no additional staffing will be necessary during the six-month pilot program. However, coming before you in the coming months, will be long-term agreements with CityNet and Project Touch. Currently, we are operating on month-to-month agreements approved about two years ago. Each entity will be requesting minor price increases. But I've also requested CityNet to provide a cost associated with a much-needed second full-time case manager at the shelter, plus a van for transportation. With our existing grants, I believe that most of this cost can be offset. In conclusion, city staff, the Marietta Police Department, and the city's nonprofit partners have been working extraordinarily hard to provide solutions to the homeless crisis and ensuring our residents and businesses are not adversely impacted. Homelessness is an incredibly complex issue that takes great investment and a willingness to try just about everything. This Council's support of our program has been essential to our success, and the action tonight allows us to help a neighboring city that doesn't have the scale to provide full-time homeless services while also directly benefiting the City of Marietta. That concludes staff's presentation, and I will remain for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. I cannot commend you enough on the work that you've done on this project from years ago to today. It's a shining example of how cities should handle their homeless programs, and other cities I know have mirrored what you have done in Marietta, and I thank you deeply because it does affect everyone, whether they realize it or not. You answered all my questions I would have had, but I do want to highlight a few. Even though Wildomar is paying their fair share for all this, we benefit.
Correct.
Because homeless is not a city issue, it's a regional issue. The more cities that we can get into the alliance, get into working with us, the better results we're going to have, because it's not just crossing a border and all of a sudden it's not my problem. So, that was a great point that you made. The cost, obviously, is going to be 100%, even though we're getting a benefit, they're going to cover 100% of the cost, and we currently have the bandwidth and existing staff to cover it all. So I think this is a win-win for everybody in the region, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I, ditto Councilmember Holliday's comments. I don't know how you do what you do, but you sure do it great, and you and your staff are amazing, so thank you for all that you do. I did have one question. Do you know when the timeframe would be for the shelter to be opened in Wildomar? Is there a timeframe for that? Is there an existing building, or do they need to build?
So they own approximately, I want to say, three to four acres on Mission Avenue in Wildomar. There is currently some structures on there, some permitted, some not, but they have plans into the city, is my understanding right now. It will need water onto the site, so they're attempting to work with Elsinore Valley Water District. The costs there are very high, but they've been very fortunate that they've, Project Touch has received some funding from various different sources, so they are well on their way to opening up and providing that shelter. So timeline, it all depends. It all depends on fundraising. I know they want to get started sooner rather than later in terms of construction, and I would expect them to do so.
Will we be able to house them in our shelters here temporarily? Will we have the room for that, to bring them onboard to our shelters?
For the time being, correct.
We will, okay.
Right now, the emergency shelter in Marietta is a fourplex. Traditionally, we can house 16 people a night, so Marietta pays for those that come from Marietta. Wildomar will pay for those that come from Wildomar. So beds will be, to a certain extent, dedicated to those cities. We have enough now. Tonight, it's raining. There's a good chance our shelter is full tonight. So there may be some nights that there won't be beds available, but that's already an existing situation right now. We prioritize the shelter beds. So first and foremost, families in Marietta with children that are in the Marietta Valley School District. Number two, veterans, individuals as well as veteran families, followed by the individuals. You've got to remember, most individuals are able and have been sleeping on the streets in certain environments for long periods of time. So we find those that are able to, and then we get them shelter as soon as we possibly can, usually no more than a day or two.
Okay. And then my last question was, when, if this is approved tonight, how fast would this start? Will this get started, be implemented?
Well, if our risk manager closes his ears, Lindsey Sisti was out this past week with Wildomar, just doing a quick site tour.
Close your ears.
With them. CityNet's available on, basically, within about a week's notice. We've already, we've been speaking about this for a pretty long period of time.
So immediately, you could get started?
Correct.
Thank you so much, and again, your team is amazing. I am so grateful.
I do want to say, it's not, you know, just myself, obviously. We have a four-member CPT team that is specially trained for this. CBAT, you know, the investments that we put into this are what causes the results that we see.
Results are tenfold, I'll tell you. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. MPT Warren. Councilmember Lavell?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, again, just to kind of echo everyone, thank you for this, this program and your leadership of it, and to all the staff that are part of it. My question is, obviously, a good running program gets good attention, and Wildomar knows about it, obviously. When this, can this scale? Do you want it to scale? And then, what is the county's role in that if it has to scale?
Do I want it to scale? Absolutely. That's what the Regional Homeless Alliance has been working towards, is just like we're removing the border between Marietta and Wildomar, there should be no border between the five cities. It's one of my biggest pet peeves when we do the annual point-in-time count, that we want to see what each city's homeless population is. We should be doing that as a region, not as an individual city, because if I want to play a game, it's real quick for me to have zero homeless. I just don't go out and count that day. That's it. And some cities do play that game, especially out in the desert communities. So, I want to scale a program where five cities are putting in the resources and each taking care of their homeless in their town, meaning all five of the cities would have homeless facilities within their city, within their borders. The county's role in this has been one of a partner. We have a great relationship with them, that we've received a lot of grant funding from them, and as a matter of fact, we're anticipating coming back to this council in the very near future with a proposal for a state encampment resolution grant, which would be in the amounts of millions of dollars for all, it's actually for four of the cities to work together, because it has to be based on a geographical area. And the county is writing that proposal for us, we're providing them the information. Not only that, we've recently asked them for a regional by-name list. Not every city has its own by-name list. You know, sometimes it's pen and paper, it's who we're dealing with on a daily basis. There's a homeless information system, which is our database, but it's very hard for cities to drill down using that. We have asked for the county to come alongside with us and develop a regional by-name list that can be, that's useful for everybody using it, and the county is working on that right now. That takes a lot of time and staff and, you know, assessments and evaluations, and they've been spending a lot for us, so we've been very grateful.
What department of the county do you work with? I guess on their side of the fence, who is driving that ship?
Housing and workforce development, primarily, and to a lesser extent, behavioral health.
Okay.
And to a lesser extent, much lesser.
Yeah. And I guess that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much for your discussion and presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavell. I'm going to piggyback on some of your questions. Is it primarily the county's responsibility to be providing beds for the homeless?
Well, I would say, historically, it was a county social service. I would say the court case, Martin v. Boise, changed everything.
Do we have a result from that?
We do. Martin versus Boise was the original case. I think you're referring to the Grand Pass.
Grants pass, yeah.
Which was based on the precedent of Martin. Martin, which I'm not sure the year of that, I want to say about 2017, I mean, that's the reason our five cities started working together. The result of that decision was our police department would not be able to enforce quality-of-life ordinances unless we had a bed available, because you don't want to criminalize homelessness. If a person has nowhere to sleep, you don't want to criminalize that and arrest them for it. There's a lot of misinterpretation, and there's a lot of questions surrounding the Martin decision, but it's the precedent of the Ninth Circuit Court, or the Ninth Circuit. So California is held to a standard that in order for us to enforce quality-of-life issues, we have to prove that we have a bed available for those individuals.
But is that the county's primarily responsibility and not the city's?
I would say the court case was against Boise, Idaho. It was not against the county of that area. Therefore, it was the first time ever a court decided that homelessness was a city-specific issue, whereas we had none of the cities in this area. city-specific issue, whereas we had no, none of the cities in this area, except for the city of Riverside, had homeless services staff at that time.
So, and this, this started in 2017, so since 2017, you have hit the ground running. I want you to know, so if, if, if any of you know that I've been an advocate for homeless for many, many years, been effective, you Google Lori Stone homeless, you'll see that I went undercover. I'm so impressed by you and your entire team.
Thank you.
And what you have done is remarkable, and while we have not had a large homeless issue, it's because you were on the ground early on in order to mitigate this. I wish we could bottle you up and send you to Sacramento, Brian, but I don't want to lose you, and I know that Kim does not want to lose you either, but if there is any way that you can communicate with the state of California, the successes that you are doing right here, and now we're expanding our services, just thank you so much. And with that said, whatever more you can get out of the county of Riverside, I'm giving you the green light to do it, sir, so.
Will do.
Thank you so much for everything that you and Lizzie and your entire team is doing. I'm just so impressed with the program, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Ambrose? If not, we will call for a motion for item six, and a second. I see a motion by Councilmember Lavell, second by, what? Oh, I'm so sorry. Are there public comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's okay. Councilmember Holliday, keeping me on track. A second by Councilwoman DeForest, and please vote.
Congratulations.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Fantastic. Moving on to public hearing, item number 11, Establishment of Medicinal Cannabis Delivery Location and Operational Standards and Miscellaneous Updates to Existing Cannabis Standards. Hello, staff. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chantaranju, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Mr. Tracy is actually going to give the report for you this evening.
Hello, Mr. Tracy.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. All right, so, tonight I'll be providing a presentation on medicinal cannabis updates with an ordinance we have proposed. This is required to be consistent with what's required under the state. To implement these standards, we have to adopt a ordinance locally. First, I'll provide some background on why we're bringing this forward. Back in 1996, voters approved Prop. 215. This established the ability for doctors to prescribe medical cannabis to patients and the primary caregivers. More recently, in 2022, the state enacted Senate Bill 1186. This was based on the premise that there's barriers to medicinal cannabis access for patients throughout the state. Under 1186, cities throughout the state are now barred from adopting or enforcing any regulation that prohibits the sale of medicinal cannabis to patients or the primary caregivers. However, the state does allow cities to adopt local standards for permitting, location, and operational components of a medicinal cannabis delivery service business. For reference, the city's current limitations on non-medical cannabis will remain unaffected by the proposed modifications. I should stress that. This includes the prohibition of recreational cannabis sales in the retail storefronts. First off, briefly cover what we cannot regulate. We cannot regulate the number of medicinal cannabis businesses authorized to deliver within the city limits, the operating hours, the number or frequency of sales, the types or quantities, and the, we can't preclude the establishment of a physical premises within the location of the city. Next, I'll kind of provide what we can regulate. We can provide reasonable zoning requirements. We can provide parameters for security and public health and safety requirements, implement licensing program, impose and collect applicable state and local taxes, provide regulations consistent with state requirements and limitations. Just to provide some background on how we got here with the implementation of the ordinance, late last year, on December 19th, the council adopted an urgency ordinance to establish a temporary 45-day moratorium to study this issue further and for implementation of the permanent ordinance. On January 10th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended that the council adopt the proposed ordinance, which is before you tonight, subject to some minor modifications, and I'll go over that in more detail in the next couple of slides. Most recently, on January 16th, the council approved the continuation of that additional 45 days until this was all implemented. Just to briefly cover what the Planning Commission recommended as part of their review, they recommended that staff further research the utilization of firearms for security and personnel at these locations, research further the state's definition of medicinal cannabis, clarification within the ordinance that signed shall contain no advertising of other companies, brands, goods, or services of the use itself, and adding larger medical facilities as a sensitive use, and this would include hospitals and urgent care facilities. Also, they recommended clarification that facilities shall be limited to storage only. Clarification also that no product shall be allowed to remain in a vehicle without an employee present at all times. And lastly, clarification within the ordinance that vehicle signage is also prohibited. The following is an overview of the proposed updates under the proposed ordinance tonight. First, we'd be rescinding the existing temporary moratorium. Second, we'd be updating terminology within the existing 1644-250 of the Marietta Municipal Code, and it's currently labeled marijuana and hemp use, providing new definitions consistent with state licensing, providing provisions for medicinal cannabis service delivery licensing. We'd have application requirements. This would include items such as site floor plan submittals, safety plans, odor control management plans, and things of that nature. And a second, operational requirements. There's a 3,000-square-foot limitation in the, for the location of one of these locations. There would also be required compliance with state laws, sign limitations, as I described earlier, delivery driver standards, and prohibited activities. On your screen here is the sensitive use proposed map. These are existing sensitive uses, and a 500-foot buffer is provided here as an example. This would include residential zones, public or private schools, daycare centers, churches, public parks, youth activity centers, and large medical facilities such as hospitals and urgent care facilities. And the light blue I should clarify is the business park zone, which is where one of these locations could potentially establish. This is just a close-up of that. There are some industrial buildings close to the freeway under this proposed limitation. This is the northern part of the city, off of Winchester, near Max Gillis, Clint Keith Road. There's no buildings up there yet. The light blue is also the business park zone, and the sensitive use area is a park that's existing in North Star Ranch. In closing, staff recommends the following actions. One, hold a public hearing, find the actions consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, in accordance with 15060(c)(2) and 15061(b)(3), and introduce an ordinance number 602, as displayed here on your screen. And staff would like to read into the record, there was a typo under 3CE, little, double little i, and we'll have that reflected in the final ordinance. It's just a comma and a, and just a little extra word, so. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We have representatives from PD that can also answer any questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tracy, for your presentation. MPT Warren.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Something stood out to me. 3,000-square-foot facility, is that the largest? Is that the smallest? Explain that to me, would you?
That would be the maximum size. So, and that's a, that would be only for storage in, of one of these delivery hubs.
Okay. So, within this hub, how would this be stored? What is, I mean, are there lockers? Are there, I mean?
They would have a secured storage room. There would be, there's required, requirements for cameras to be everywhere within the facility on the exterior of the facility. It has to be gated. It has to have secured access. It's very much limited in terms of any access from the outside.
Thank you.
Thank you. MPT Warren. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In reading through the, the proposed ordinance, the zoning for deliveries, businesses that can receive deliveries, is what I assume all the Ps were in all those lines, and that's existing today. Basically, it says that they are, any, any zone, any business, any residence, is allowed to receive a delivery in Marietta.
Well, our current code doesn't allow for this necessarily. It's, it could have a limiting factor today, so that's why we're clarifying this in this ordinance.
So, this is new?
This, yeah.
So, you're clarifying that all the zones and all the uses can receive a delivery?
Correct, and that's.
Based upon that law?
Yeah, and that's consistent with what's required by the state.
Okay. And then, if you could go back to that map that shows the, yeah, the one, that one, that's a good one. So, we have the two business park zones, one on the west side and one on the east side of town, that they can locate in. The, the circles that you've drawn are places they can't locate because they're a sensitive receptor. My first question is, what makes it a sensitive receptor to a business that can advertise? Everything has to be done inside. The cars can't have anything in them. If they have product in cars, they have to have two employees there. How would that create a problem for any of those sensitive receptors?
Madam, Madam Mayor, thank you for the question, Councilmember Holliday. So, I think it's just an extra layer of protection. When we're, when cities are dealing with, with cannabis, one of the things that we try to do is, is minimize what we call secondary effects. So, by implementing all the standards that you had mentioned, that's one way of, of doing it, with no advertising, no signage, limiting storage, and, and so forth. So, by having this additional layer, I think it just really assures us that we're minimizing those secondary effects to the extent that we can.
So, then my, my follow-up question to that is, if, if I read the ordinance correctly, it says that it, it also can't be located within 500 feet of another delivery business.
That is correct.
So, if I plop one down in the northwest corner of that business park, I pretty much can eliminate any other business from locating in that whole northwest area that's currently on the map. And if so, if a couple of key businesses go in those business park, you're effectively limiting how many businesses can open, which is one of the things we cannot do. Am I correct?
We can, we can provide reasonable zoning regulations in terms of citing of these locations. That's the approach that other jurisdictions have taken throughout the state. So, as long as we can demonstrate that there's the opportunity for someone to set up a location, that shouldn't be an issue for us with the state.
So, once, assuming we get businesses into town that start doing this, and once there are, because of that 500-foot radius, once it basically blankets an area to where no new businesses come in, what happens then? Will we be in non-compliance with the law at that time?
Well, one of the issues, you know, with, with new laws, is it's really difficult for the local agency to try to interpret what the state meant. So, you know, the purpose of the ordinance is to provide a platform for, you know, cannabis delivery, and so, I think we would, it's something that we would have to continue to evaluate, so if we never get a business that locates in the city, obviously, we won't ever have to change the ordinance, but as the cannabis industry, you know, I suppose, matures, it may be something we'd have to come back and evaluate, but at least for now, I think we've met the requirements of state law.
Okay. And then my last question is, I believe it was San Marcos that addressed this law differently than what's being proposed. Can you speak on that for a minute?
Yeah, San Marcos's approach was that there was a sufficient number of locations within the vicinity of the, of the city limits. We, we went over this with our legal team, and we felt that that approach wouldn't be agreed upon by the state Department of Cannabis Control, so we felt that this approach would be more appropriate, and I don't know if David has anything additional.
Yeah, again, I just would go back to my comments about, it's hard to interpret what the state meant when they passed the law, so we think this is probably the, a better conservative approach for the, in terms of complying with the state.
Okay, so, in, in your educated opinion, this will keep us out of trouble the most?
We believe so.
I'm not going to hold you to it. It's not like it's being recorded or anything. Thank you for the presentation. You guys did great.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions for you. Is the 500 feet of regulation that's coming from the state?
It's on a local basis. We also did evaluate 1,000 feet, and I can go to a slide that shows that criteria, but that basically eliminated everything, so I, in the eyes of the state regulators, that probably would be too restrictive, and let me, I can go to that right now, if you give me a second.
I would say, wait, while Chris is pulling the map up, 500 feet seems to be a, kind of a standard separation or buffer zone, if you will, that a lot of cities have used for different types of uses, so we applied it here as well, and as Chris will walk through some other buffers that we considered, and why we think that 500 foot is appropriate.
Yeah, thank you, David. On the left side of your screen here, this is the 1,000-foot buffer. Basically, compared to the 500 feet, you can see that it would leave a very small area, you know, for someone to be able to establish a business. You know, after internal dialogue, we felt that this would be too restrictive in terms of meeting what is required by the state in terms of complying with this law.
It does, though, leave a place for somebody to open a business, though. I do see that gray spot.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you for that. I appreciate that diagram as well. Could, do we also have a caveat that we have the number of incidences with our law enforcement that we could revoke their business license to conduct business and consider them a nuisance?
Yeah, there's a revocation section on the ordinance. Let me, right there, sorry. I don't know, Chief Conrad has anything to add on the enforcement side, too?
Yeah. He's very comfortable. He's still sitting there, yeah. Sorry, don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Basically, we have the ability to revoke, you know, consistent with other licenses, similar like the massage regulations. It goes through that whole appeals process, you know, that we, we utilize for all these types of activities that are.
Could we make sure, though, that we had something specifically to declare it a nuisance that, and, and what would that number be? Less than the massage, I would definitely assume, so that we?
Yep. So, there, as you know, there's a litany of requirements for these businesses to operate by. So, the, the language that we've got in the draft ordinance identifies that a violation of any of those requirements would be held to be a public nuisance, which would give us the grounds to revoke a license, so even one violation would be a public nuisance.
Okay.
And I can read it out if you'd like.
No, no, that's fine. You don't have to. I appreciate that. The other thing is, is it was just about the radius and the secondary effects to homes surrounding that area, because 500 foot is not very far. I mean, I can smell my barn at 500 foot, right? So, and that smells a lot worse.
They do have to use an extensive odor control management plan, and that's part of the application process.
So, it would have zero emissions?
That would be, that would be the goal. It shouldn't be detectable at all outside the premises.
Okay. I appreciate all your work. I appreciate the 1,000-foot a lot, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, and that you were so quick to get us the 45-day moratorium as well. So, thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeForest. So, I have lots of questions. The first one, just for clarification, when this first came about... The first one, just for clarification, when this first came about as far as delivery, I thought it was just having deliveries from a business that's outside of Marietta. So this ordinance is that cannabis can be delivered to a facility in Marietta, and we have a 500-feet radius from the requirements.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. There's, we have to have these delivery hubs, if you will, consistent with state law, is how it's been.
And the maximum is 3,000 square feet.
Yes, that's the cap.
And based on the map, we could have, basically, it's a distribution center because the product's going to be distributed to this facility, and then they're going to be distributing it out to our community, correct?
Right. And that's, we, in that zone, that is a use that's currently permitted. And these are essentially like small Amazon delivery centers, if you will, and better...
But do you realize how much product can go into a 3,000-square-foot facility? You're talking about a lot of product. So are we allowed to put a cap on how many of these centers we will allow in the city of Marietta?
I think, I think that'd be a good question for maybe legal, because there's what, what could be interpreted as the limiting effect by our ordinance, excuse me, on what's required by the state law. Sorry.
A cap on the number of facilities?
Yes.
I mean, you're not supposed to expressly put a cap on the number of facilities, but by selecting the location and the sensitive use barrier and all of those things, we're trying to creatively have that affect.
So what Councilwoman DeForest stated was that if we had a 1,000-square-feet radius, that would minimize the amount of distribution centers.
Right. So that's what the sidebar was about. But the problem is, is then the areas are so limited that if, practically speaking, someone couldn't come in and actually acquire a space in one of those areas, once this ordinance is effective, to have the distribution center, then our ordinance would be illegal as applied, and we could be sued. So you want to leave enough room that there are spaces available?
Okay.
That one or a few could come in.
Okay. So we could maybe 750. And then also, with regards to the massage businesses, don't we have also a radius of how many can be on one street as well? And can we impose that ordinance in Marietta as well? I mean, if there's an area in our industrial park that you can put a distribution center, and what's to prevent having 10 over there?
Yeah, if you look at the map, there would be...
The 500 foot is measured from the property line of the business park center, so that will...
So inside a business park center?
You couldn't...
Face today, how many typically, just one?
Just one.
Just one? Okay. So that's good.
Yeah, it would have a limiting effect. And the thing with the massage regulations, those are governed by a different set of state laws. They're a little bit more, there's a little bit more local input on the ability to, you know, regulate those. We do have a 1,000-foot buffer on those. There's also a cap of one, I think, five per, per 10,000 or something like that population. I have to take a look. But there's just a lot more flexibility is what I'm getting at with that type of...
I was, the reason why I asked that question, because I was confused by Councilmember Holiday in his question, and so I was thinking, oh, my God, does that mean we could have, you know, many in one area? Can we increase the requirement, like we have massage therapist businesses? Or do we have to go with what the state says? Or can we think outside the box and have some additional requirements from this type of establishment?
This is, they've come up with a lot of creative, outside-the-box...
Okay. Thank you for answering that. And can we, can we identify certain businesses, such as a distribution center? Can we amend our fees and increase the fees for this type of business?
I believe there has to be a cost-study nexus type of thing done to be able to implement that. We can definitely evaluate that over time, once we get these in, if that does occur. That would come back for a future, you know, type of ordinance on its own.
Great. I have two more questions. The next one is, the distribution center is going to be delivering product to possibly homes and businesses. Is there a sales tax imposed on this distribution center?
The council would have to establish, there's a process the council would go through to establish a tax for cannabis. So I think with the history that we have with, with the use or cannabis in general, since we prohibit the sale, obviously, there wouldn't be a special tax that could be collected. State law does allow local cities to establish, you know, a tax if it, if it wants to do that.
Okay, so we can do that?
Can't do that.
It would take a vote of the people. The council could put it on the ballot.
Oh, so we can, we can do that for November?
You could?
Okay.
I mean, we would, I would want to look into, though, whether that would be considered the point of sale, since it's not a dispensary, it's only a delivery, so...
But it really is a source of a sale. They're delivering, but in, and they have purchased the item.
I mean, the delivery is already happening, just not that we're aware of from within the city.
But we, but we don't have, that we know of, any establishments right now in the city of Marietta. But once this is approved, yeah, they're going to be coming. And I think that if there's a possibility that we can financially gain from what the state is imposing and mandating on us, then there should be compensation, especially code enforcement and public safety. Here's another business that's going to require a little bit more of attention, and this is one way of recouping those costs. So if we can do that, I encourage our council to do that. And then my final question is, if we tell the state of California, no, tell me the ramifications of us saying no.
Well, I think that's something we'd like to confer with the city attorney about, and then maybe bring you something back, not in an open forum. But, you know, there's always, you know, danger when, you know, we don't comply with state laws.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions, and I think MPT Warren's in the queue here.
Yeah, I just, simple. So what you're telling us is that the 500-feet radius, the state would probably say, okay, we could live with that. If we go any more than that, they're going to say, you're overreaching so that nothing gets put in. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I think, you know, out, out the gate, you know, we have no idea what the demand is like. And so, you know, I think, I think we're recommending to you this approach, and if we feel that there's a problem, we'd come back to you and ask you to consider, you know, looking at the regulations again. But I think, you know, right now, we've provided, you know, several locations for potential business to locate, and, you know, I think we meet the requirements of state law by doing this right now and not, and being, you know, conservative about it. So that's why you've got the recommendation that you've got from us.
And I understand. I know how hard you've worked on this to try and buffer all of this. It would be easier to go at 750 and have to take away 250. They're not going to give us 250 or a 500 more. So wouldn't it be better to start at a higher number? And if they say, no, you're too restrictive, you need to bring it back to 500? I'm just trying to think how the state thinks, which is very difficult at best.
If I could speak to that. So the state's not paying attention to what we're doing. It's if a business comes in and they can't find a spot, then, then they would either sue us or go to the AG and say that we're not complying with the state law. And at that point, we could look at changing it. But by leaving just the slightly bigger 500-foot buffer, it seems likely that there are many locations where someone could go in if they wanted to, and then we wouldn't have to go through all of that.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to get this wrapped around my head. The other question I had is, point of sale. Gets grown here, gets delivered here, goes out the door. When you buy a car, it's made here, goes there, and where the point of sale is where it's garaged. Would that not, if we were to do a sales tax, wouldn't point of sale be where the delivery, where the end user is?
Well, but that's where they buy it. So different types of industries have different rules for taxes. And so since we're not going to have a dispensary where someone goes in and orders it, I don't know how that part of it would work. And so we'd need to look into that.
I would really like us to look into that if we could. Because, you know, we're going to take the brunt of this, we might as well benefit from it somehow. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, MPT Warren, Councilwoman DeForest.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I was just thinking, Councilwoman, or Mayor Potem, sorry. I was thinking it was kind of like Amazon, you know, and that we do get some taxes on that, so. So, back to you. So wouldn't our argument be that we have limited business park availability, right? That's something that we're lacking in any way as a city. Wouldn't that be an argument that, you know, we have limited, but we still are giving you an opportunity at the 1,000-foot?
Yeah, I think, I think it's just more, it's a legal risk evaluation, I think, in what level, what the comfort level is, you know? And we don't, we don't know what the state, you know, would come back with at this point, so that's...
Without verifying that if we did that 1,000-foot buffer, that in those different areas, there are spaces where a delivery hub could go in, then it's risky. I mean, what if the, you know, some of those property owners wouldn't rent to this type of use, or they're already under long-term leases? And so practically, you know, even though we're saying, oh, you could go here or here, because there's really only like two or three areas, if no one could actually do it, then we're not allowing it.
All right. No, thank you. And again, I appreciate all your time on this issue and trying to bring us as much information with as much regulations to keep our citizens safe and the quality of life that they are demanding. And I can imagine how many phone calls that all of us will be getting once something like that comes into the area. So, but once again, we are, our hands are tied by our state, state law and the regulations that are pushed down from Sacramento. So I thank the rest of my council for thinking diligently on this, and I appreciate your time listening to me as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that's fine. Okay. Okay, we're going to open up public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimonies regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cassin Klein.
So I had no intention to talk about this until I heard this discussion. For historical perspective, and I don't know if, if the city attorney is able to, but we had this, we had a similar ordinance, Ron, you may remember, with adult toy stores. And as I recall, gosh, 25 years ago, 20, 25 years ago, it was very similar to what staff is talking about, and we wrestled with this very thing. And then, of course, Dreambox came in, and as I recall, they came in on, they challenged the city's code. So staff and/or the city attorney may do some research, and that might help you find some of the answers that you're looking for.
Thank you. That concludes public comments.
I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Holiday, did you have another question?
Not so much a question, just discussion. Reading through the entire proposed ordinance, I do want to say that I think staff has done a phenomenal job as a, as a business owner who's had many businesses in this area over the years, looking at the, as the city attorney described it, the litany of what you would have to go through to get this business approved and the requirements to operate this business. One, if they follow the ordinance, we shouldn't get phone calls, because no one will ever know they're there. They can't have a sign on a car. They can't have a sign on a building, except for their address. They have to have the cars in a secure locked area when they're not delivering. And they have to have two employees in the vehicle when they're delivering, so that when one is delivering, the other person is in the vehicle to protect the product and not let it be stolen out of the vehicle. And those are, those are just three that came off the top of my head from reading the list. Security cameras, odor control. This would be the last business I would go into with the requirements under this ordinance. So I commend you on a job well done in trying to anticipate the intent of this council and the residents who we represent. With that being said, if they violate that and we start getting phone calls, because people know they're there, then we have the ability to shut them down. So I, I think you guys have covered all the bases that could be foreseeable, knowing that we can't always foresee everything, and we could need to amend this in the future. But I would encourage my colleagues to approve this as is, and I will make that motion.
Are there any other comments from my fellow colleagues? Seeing none. We do have a motion from Councilmember Holiday, and a second from Councilmember Lovell. I know, I'm, 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 I am really struggling with this one.
I have a question, Madam City Attorney. We've thrown a lot of questions at staff today, and we would like for them to come back with additional information based on our questions. Are we able to bring this back? No?
I think a majority of the council is ready to vote.
And, and the question's been called.
Okay.
I appreciate, yes. I know where you're coming from. I think we're all in that same place with you.
Our emergency ordinance is only given so long anyway, right? You'd have to do something right away.
I mean, I think we have more time than that.
So the city council extended the original 45-day moratorium. It's currently at 10 months and 15 days. If the ordinance moves forwards as proposed, the urgency ordinance will terminate automatically when, if the draft ordinance becomes effective. So would be mid, early April, I think.
Madam City Attorney, I know that Mr. Chanteron, who does not, you know, prefer to talk about this publicly, but I have, I have to ask you, what would the consequences be for the city of Marietta if this did not pass?
Well, if we continue to not, once the moratorium expired, if we continue to not allow delivery businesses and a business wanted to come in, I assume they would go to the AG, and I don't know what the AG would do to us. I mean, they might try to find us, they might sue, they'd probably sue us to get a court order.
To force us, to force us to be in compliance?
To make us enact an ordinance.
Could, could I just add, you know, Madam Mayor, I think, you know, with, with zoning policy, one of the things you become very sensitive to are grandfathered uses. So the regulations that we have in front of you provide a very robust program, if you will, for businesses to comply. So if, if we don't have these provisions in place, and as the city attorney described, if, you know, we get forced to allow this type of use, it would be without any of the standards that we currently are recommending to you.
Yeah. You know, this is really frustrating for me, because the, the state of California is basically holding the city hostage, and I have to think about the residents. And, and, you know, do I put the residents... And, and, you know, do I put the residents at risk because I'm doing the right thing by protecting them? And it's so unfair for our residents to be imposed by the state or be mandated that they're forcing us to do this. I'm, 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 I'm very, this is very hard for me, it's frustrating, and the only reason why I'm doing this is because I want to protect our residents and our city.
Well, we have a vote on... Okay.
Okay. Done, Madam City Clerk.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to governing body announcements. Governing, governing body announcements is an opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes, and the city clerk will use the computerized timer. Councilwoman DeForest.
I am going to defer till next time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle.
Wait, pause, sorry.
You do have something?
Yeah, I just want to wish my wife a happy birthday.
Ah!
She turns 40 tomorrow. Yeah, sorry.
Good boy.
She turns 40 tomorrow.
Now you're in trouble. Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My governing body announcements are, will be on the screen and, and on the internet for those who are watching there. Did want to highlight a couple of things. I did interview with our vendor for the Master Trails, Master Trails Master Plan, Trails Master Plan, and found that company to be a good choice. I don't know who hired them. Was that you, Mr. Ambrose?
Team of us.
Team of you. Well, congratulations to the team, because they're doing a great job. And I also attended the first committee outreach and just kind of sat in the back and observed. They did a great job. We had 19 residents show up to that first one. I know the city's posted on social media, I post on my social media. I would encourage my colleagues to post that out there. The more input we get, the better. The survey link is on my GBAs that'll be online. Click on that link to take the survey. We want to get as much input from the public as possible. That vendor is doing a great job. And then, the last thing is the K-9 trials. I was out there for a bit, fortunately, unfortunately, I don't know how you want to look at it, I had a wedding to go to in Huntington Beach, so we couldn't stay there for the full day. But the vendors were great, the K-9 teams out there were working hard, and it was enjoyable to watch. I hope a lot of residents got out there to see that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. MPT Warren. Thank you. I, on Valentine's Day, not only did I get to go to the RCTC meeting, but I got to share my Valentine's Day with most of my colleagues at the I-15 Temecula Auxiliary Lane groundbreaking ceremony. That was a lot of fun. There is a picture that is up, and I want you to know that we are holding up sparkling cider. It is not champagne, so just wanted to clarify that, Chief, so that you know we were not drinking and driving. I also wanted to let you know on behalf of the council I attended Student of the Month, as we had conflicting events to be at, so thank you, Mayor, for letting me do that. What a program. These students are amazing. Many have overcome so much to be where they are today, and I just couldn't be prouder of this organization, and it was an honor to represent the city there that day. And I, too, was at the K-9 trials. I don't know how I missed you, but Chief, I have a question. You know, I tried to take pictures of our explorers and our, and then the, and the officers barbecuing, and they all have this look. So I said, can someone smile, please? I had to go back twice to get a picture of them smiling. Great group of people, I enjoyed it very much. I'll tell you one thing, I'm never going to be on the other side of that K-9, ever, 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 because they're very fierce. But what a trial, what a great day, no rain, it was fabulous. So, thank your team, and thank Marietta for putting this wonderful event on. I enjoyed it very much. That concludes my report. Right, thank you, MPT Warren. I'm going to defer my governing body announcements, except for one comment that council did attend the I-15 auxiliary, auxiliary lane groundbreaking in Temecula, and the mayor gave us a little Valentine card to thank us for our partnership, and so it was very, very cute, so.
Can I repurpose that for you?
Yeah. That says Happy Valentine's Day, by the way.
Stretch that out for next year.
Okay. Moving on to council member requests and add items for future agendas. This is the time for council members to request to add items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my fellow colleagues? Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question before I start for the city attorney. Are we allowed to, as a consensus, give direction to staff, or does it have to come back at a future agenda and then give direction to staff?
It depends, I mean, but generally, it has to be on the agenda.
Okay. I just want to know which route I needed to go.
Okay.
So I'd like to get consensus. I know that our development department is currently working through some revisions on the development code. That's going to come to us at a future agenda, and I would like them to include us revisiting the storage container ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago. I've got one particular residence, but I know more that are affected by this. They have a storage container that's been there for about 25 years. It's painted the same color as their barn, it's, it's not...
Councilmember Holiday, I need you to be briefed, please, on this.
I thought I could just tell us what it is.
Just, just very minimal, sir.
Anyhow, there, because the ordinance doesn't allow for any grandfathering, they're kind of in a pickle, because they have nowhere for it to go, per the ordinance, because it was so restrictive. So I'd just like us to be able to take a look at that, if we could get consensus to have that brought back when the development code comes back.
You want to bring that back as a discussion topic during the development code discussion?
Correct.
Sure. Just to talk about it?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
You received consensus. Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Okay. Before we adjourn, in honor of the recent President's Day holiday, I would like to share the following quote. "My hope is always in the future, for it is there that dreams are realized," and that is Martha Washington. Without any further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.